Doug, are you ready? Or you want to wait?
I like to wait if I could.
Yeah, yeah. And it'll reflect poorly on my evaluation. So why don't we go ahead and get started? The date is Tuesday, July 26, 2022. This is a regular time and place for a meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. As we continue to deal with the health emergency, this meeting is being televised on WebEx. And so whether you're using the web or a teleconferencing component, part of that format, we appreciate your participation. We also have people here in the, in person in the chambers, and we appreciate your attendance. For those interested in commenting during unscheduled, please use the raise your hand feature online or get someone's attention if you're using the teleconferencing. And those members in the audience that have filled out a member, a speaker's card will take them in the order that the clerk received them. All of the action this morning will be verbal or a voice vote. So after discussion has happened, there's a motion made and then a second, and then we will take the roll by district. So with that, I again want to thank everyone for being here. Stay safe, stay healthy. And in order to establish quorum, I'm going to ask now the clerk to please call the roll.
Joan Eves.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboon.
Here.
Craig Peterson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
Let the record show, we have five members present. We have established quorum. We will be able to conduct business. If I can ask you all now to please rise as we invite Pastor Chad Fagundes of Coen India Church to deliver to this morning's invocation, and then remain standing for the Pledge of Chad, do we have you online? Chad, you're on mute. God can hear you, but we're having a little bit difficulty. Prayer works well everywhere except the virtual world.
Only half of them are Joe's and Charlie's.
I know. We'll give Chad one more chance. Supervisor Verboon, will you deliver the invocation this morning? Keep talking, buddy.
Let us pray. Oh, Lord, please help us as we try to make the best decision possible, equal to all the people in Kings County. And let's pray for our firefighters that are up in Yosemite fighting the fire. And pray for rain. Thank you. Amen.
Amen. Now join me as we honor America by resigning the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and everlasting. Thank you very much, everyone.
Very inspiring.
Oh, everybody's. Okay. We're having a little technical difficulty through the WebEx, so we will try to resolve those before we move forward. So I got to do it over again? My mic not on? I know. We did that on purpose, and it's still, yeah. By the way, my email wasn't working very good either, so you know, it's not just, okay. While these awkward moments of silence, well, why don't we just handle a couple of other issues that might be coming up and so.
Well, I'm gonna need to go to church again, I guess.
Are you?
Yeah.
They need a new roof or what?
Too long.
Yeah?
Pretty long either. Jordan Sweet.
Try it again. You want to call IT? John, you got to, you know, a good IT guy, we can go.
Good morning. This is Catherine. Can anyone who's online with WebEx verify if you're able to hear us? We're having some audio issues.
Yeah, this is Scott Hallwell. I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you so much, Scott.
I can hear very well.
Very good. We've confirmed that part of it, so we're back online. So thank you very much for the, and apologize for the delay. The next item on the agenda is unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the agenda or any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of this board. Speakers are limited to two minutes. And does a clerk have a record of anyone that would like to address the board at this time?
I have no written comments, but I do have speaker cards. The first speaker is Kelly Vernon.
Good morning, Kelly. Thank you for being here. I didn't get the memo. Everybody's wearing red.
I know. Power day.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Kelly Vernon, Chief Probation Officer. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Human Resources and Administration for their work that they did with the Kings County Probation Officers Association in coming up with a proposal for you this morning regarding longevity pay. This will go a long ways in helping us with problems that we have had with retention of our staff, and it operationalizes statements made by this board as to the importance of public safety and the fact that you value experienced and well-trained officers. So I would urge you to approve that matter when it comes before you, and I thank you for your time and your support of public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
The next speaker is Carolyn Leist.
Man, everybody's wearing red today. I just missed the memo. I'm about five months away from that, though. So.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Carolyn Leist, Human Resources Director. I wanted to come before you today just to introduce some new staff that we have. We have a new, um, Kalana Ashley Hernandez is our new Personnel Analyst. We stole her from the California Corrections in Florin, so we're happy.
I mean, reapportioned it, not steal. Reassigned.
So welcoming her for, you'll see her coming up probably before the board doing agenda items as well, as we also promoted our constituent, Brianna Allen, to our Personnel Technician. So I just wanted to come and let you guys know that there's changes in our department.
Good. You have five minutes acceptance speech? Thank you for being here. Good luck. We'll see if you come back after the first paycheck. That's usually the first, the first milestone we look for is if you come back after your first paycheck, then we'll see. Anyone else?
It's all the speaker cards that I have. It doesn't appear that anyone online has their hand raised.
No one online. Anyone in person? Oh, Dave, uh, yeah, if you have a star on, you can't talk. You have to wait.
I'm vacation for two weeks, so I figured I should at least say, oh, we missed you? I didn't, I didn't even miss you.
Is that the new math?
Dave Robinson, Kings County Sheriff, just wanted to say officially, uh, August 5th at 10:00 AM, we are going to do the open house of the new headquarters. Um, we were waiting on a few things with the contractor and the architect, but we were able to confirm that. So, you know, come on through August 5th, 10:00 AM till 1:00 PM. So anytime that works for you on that Friday, come on through the new building. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Happy hour on a Friday. That's for sheriffs. Anyone else? See, no, no one else come forward, we'll move on to the next item, which is a reporting out on the closed session that was held on July 19th. Diane, do you have a reporting out?
There are no items to report out from closed session.
Very good. Thank you, Diane. Uh, the next item is a action item regarding the approval of the minutes from that meeting held on July 19th. Have the board members had an opportunity to review the minutes?
If there's no question or comments, I'll make a motion to approve.
Move by Verboon.
Second.
Seconded by Valley. Thank you very much. Additional questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing or seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joan Eves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Yes.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Four in favor, one abstention on the approval of the minutes from July 19th. We'll now move to the consent calendar. All items under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted by one motion. The request of any board member in the item may be removed and made part of the regular agenda. We have, uh, an item from the Sheriff's Department and an item regarding Kings County Behavioral Health. Have members had an opportunity to review these two items?
If there's no question or comments, I'll motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Moved by Verboon, seconded by Valley. Um, additional questions, clarifications? Hearing or seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joan Eves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show, the consent calendar stands approved. Five in favor. Thank you very much, everyone. Uh, we'll now move to, uh, regular board gender, agenda items, and the first item comes from child support. Marie, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Marie Waite, Kings County Child Support Services Director, and with me today is David Kilgore, our Director of Child Support Services for California.
Morning. It's a pleasure to be with you to here today and, uh, and celebrate the beginning of Child Support Awareness Month. You may be aware that this, this year, we've kind of emphasized the theme one size does not fit all, which really starts a campaign for the child support program in that we want to transform into an organization that really caters to the participants that we serve instead of the uniform approach that we've traditionally taken for the past 30 years. So it's my honor to be here with you and to share and celebrate this particular time in the child support program and look forward to the future. So thank you for having me.
Good. Uh, David, uh, yeah, I know you're a Tulare County guy. Kind of have some experience, but we certainly want to acknowledge and thank you for being here. We have a little gift.
That pair of summer shorts?
Uh, this is good. Uh, the only trouble is the, um, I think the district attorney and the sheriff was here. I'm not sure. The sheriff is still here. Be careful where you wear this because, uh, the sheriff has called those Portuguese gang clothes. So be careful where you wear that. Yeah, because you could get in trouble, but you'll get right in and put on a crowd. We also have a one-of-a-kind guarantee to be a family heirloom. There are numbers on the back, but don't try to read them. Uh, LaPellepin, uh, representing Kings County, and we certainly appreciate your service at the state level, and thank you for having a local person represent the, uh, represent. So.
I really appreciate it.
Good, good. Yeah, yeah.
So as you see, when you walk in, we are starting to display in the window, the one size does not fit all theme. And so we have a little onesie right here that says, establish paternity. And then we'll have bigger sizes that have contact information and just really communicating to our customers that we understand that one size does not fit all and that we are going to be focused on catering to a fit for families that are based on the service and care required for each of our case participants. So with that, we recognize that parents we serve have a unique story. We're here to provide exactly what fits them, and we want to proclaim August 2022 as Child Support Services Month. And we have some employees that we want to partake in a picture with board members today. So with that, I'm going to ask for Sandy Borja Olivera, Child Support Supervisor, to join us.
Kim Eager, Assistant Director.
Richard Cleaver, Supervising Attorney.
Dory McCarty, Program Manager.
Olivia Rodriguez, Program Manager.
Vanessa Sanchez, Child Support Specialist 3.
Trina Villagrande, Child Support Assistant.
Cassie Leeder, Executive Secretary.
Katie Zalinka, Child Support Specialist 2.
Good job. Photo op. All right, everybody want to take, stand up, squeeze in, get, act like you like people.
I'm like, I was like, uh, who's, who's Karen?
Ah.
Oh, my friend, there you go.
Isn't this the guy that beat you on the step? Ah, 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 yeah, yeah. Say cheese.
I don't know why.
Yeah, you like that, huh?
Connect automatically.
Good job. Thank you, everyone.
So we respectfully request that the board adopt a proclamation declaring August as Child Support Awareness Month. The resolution has been approved by County Council, and we are available for any questions.
Thank you, Marie. Uh, the, uh, any questions, comments?
If there's no question or comments, Mr. Chair, I move for adoption.
And I'll second.
Moved by Peterson, seconded by Verboon. Um, additional questions, follow-up? Hearing none, uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joan Eves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show, that item stands approved. Five in favor. Good luck. Safe travels. Thank you. The, uh, next item comes from Community Development and, uh, a monthly report on the Planning Commission activities. Chuck Kenny, good morning. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Chuck Kenny with Community Development Agency. Come before you today to provide you the monthly report out from the Planning Commission activities from their July 11th meeting, uh, which they had one application to consider at their, uh, meeting, which was conditional use permit 21-06 for Sandridge Partners. Uh, the proposal was to, is, well, it was to construct a kosher beef processing, uh, facility, uh, on the northwest corner of Jackson Avenue and Highway 41, to be located at 19868 Jackson Avenue. The beef harvesting plant proposes to process 210 animals daily, and the Planning Commission, uh, did add a condition restricting them to not having more than 420 animals on site at any one time. Uh, with that additional provision added, uh, they did approve the project, three in favor and two absent. And that concludes my report for the Planning Commission's activities unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Chuck. Um, any questions, comments? Is there an appeal process? Kind of walk through the scenario?
Uh, the appeal process, they were given eight days to file an appeal. Uh, we have not received any appeals submitted as of yet.
And so on the 11th.
Yeah.
Already passed the eighth, eighth today.
Yeah.
And then, uh, yeah, very good. Thank you. Uh, any other questions or comments? This is a monthly report to be, uh, accepted, so.
I'll make the motion to accept as presented.
Second.
Moved by Verboon, seconded by Peterson. Additional questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing or seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joan Eves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show, uh, the, uh, item is accepted unanimously. Thank you very much. Next item comes from Humans Resources. We have a couple of items. Carolyn, good morning once again. Thank you for being here.
Chairman, members of the board. Carolyn Leist, Human Resources Director. Uh, the county's memorandum of understanding with the Probation Officers Association included a re opener to discuss longevity pay. Uh, negotiations began on June 28th, 2022, and the parties have reached an agreement. Effective July 25th, 2022, employees who've completed 10 years of continuous service, uh, full-time service in an allocated position shall, in addition to their salary, receive longevity pay in the amount of 3%. The cost of longevity pay for the Probation Officers Association for the remainder of this fiscal year, 2022, 2023, is approximately $44,191. Um, however, the cost could be higher dependent upon anticipated CalPERS retirement rates and social security costs with the higher salaries implemented in the fiscal year. The cost will be absorbed in the probation department's budget. Staff recommends the board authorize the county administrative officer to sign the side letter of agreement with the Probation Officers Association for longevity pay beginning July 25th, 2022. I want to thank the board and administration and staff for their assistance throughout this process, and I also want to thank Vanessa Hernandez, our unsung hero in the payroll department who helps do the programming in the background. So, um, I do want to thank her as well. So thank you. If there's any questions, I'm available.
Good. Thank you, Carolyn. Questions, comments, or concerns?
If there's no question or comments, uh, I'll move for approval as presented. Thank you, Carolyn.
Second.
Moved by Verboon, seconded by Peterson. Additional questions or comments? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joan Eves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show, that item stands approved. Five in favor. Thank you very much. Uh, you want to, uh, pick on the rest of it?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So the county and the Deputy Sheriff's Association and now Probation Officers Association entered into side letter agreements for 3% longevity pay for employees with 10 years of continuous full-time service in allocated positions. Longevity pay is recommended for Deputy Sheriff's Association and Probation Officer Association's Safety Management excluding the sheriff to be consistent with personnel who oversee the employees of these respective bargaining groups. Section 5 of the salary resolution includes the unrepresented management benefits. An incomplete salary of the salary resolution was included in the agenda packet. However, a full resolution was provided to the clerk to the board for the record. The salary resolution includes the addition of the longevity pay for the identified salary management or safety management classifications and miscellaneous additions and deletions and classification activity previously approved by the Board of Supervisors since the last salary resolution update, which was approved on June 21st, 2022. Staff recommends the approval of 3% longevity pay for the identified safety management classifications excluding the sheriff effective July 25th, 2022, pay period 16, 2022, and approval of the salary resolution which reflects the recommended longevity pay for the identified, um, safety management classifications and previously authorized classification and salary changes. And again, I want to thank the board, administration, and staff for their assistance, and again, Vanessa Hernandez, I did, um, put a little kink in there a little bit because it changed it with this programming. So I want to thank her for, for taking the time and getting that done so fast. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Carolyn. Questions, comments, concerns?
Nope. I'll make the motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Moved by Verboon, seconded by Fagundes. Additional questions, comments? Hearing or seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joan Eves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show, item stands approved. Thank you, Carolyn. Good luck. The next item comes from the Job Training Office. Lance, good morning. Thank you for being here. Want to talk about some, uh, subgrant agreements.
Sir, good morning, Mr. Chairman and board. The item before you today is our Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act. It's our yearly authorization for allocations from the state. The state's a pass-through entity for the Fed at the DOL, which is the primary funding that we receive at the Job Training Office. The current master subgrant agreement will have an increase in youth funding, specifically our youth programming for 18, adults, youth 18 to 24, sorry. It's an increase of about $70,267. However, overall, our WEOWA grant authorization will be about 2.3 million, which is a $300,000 decrease year over year from the prior year. I would point out, however, that staff have already secured two competitive grants and made up $250,000 of that shortfall to retain services. The authorization includes an authorization for the director to also sign contracts. That is something we've done in the past, and we carry over today. We process about 200 contracts a year out of this program. If there's any questions or concerns, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Lance. Questions, comments, or concerns regarding the approval?
Second.
Moved by Fagundes, seconded by Peterson. Thank you very much. Um, additional questions or comments on the motion?
Lance, you don't have a gang hat?
Not that cool, so.
You gotta do something cool.
Oh.
We'll see what we can do.
Uh, yeah, yeah. We'll, we'll, we'll work on it.
On it. Yeah. I think, I think that could be argued. I think he's cool every day. He rides to work, right?
Except for today, a little too hot.
Yeah.
All right, uh, since there is no other questions, comments, uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joan Eves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show, that item stands approved. Good luck, Lance. Appreciate it. Spend all the money. Yeah, I, I guess we could give you a cap because you are very efficient at spending money. So I guess we could bring that, uh, bring that up. Uh, the next, uh, three items come from the Public Health Department. And, uh, good morning. Thank you for being here. We have, uh, several items.
Good morning. Nicole Fisher is gonna present the first item.
Okay. Good morning, Nicole.
Hi, good morning. Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Nicole Fisher, Public Health. I'm happy to stand before you today representing our Women Infant and Children Program and our Kings County Breastfeeding Coalition to announce August as National Breastfeeding Month. I'm honored to have a member of our Kings County Breastfeeding Coalition here standing with me. Ann Margaret Lloyd is a lactation specialist from Adventist Health. Breastfeeding or human milk feeding is the biological norm for infant feeding, and we know with many years of research, important strategy that builds a lifelong foundation to health and wellness and maternal bonding, which is so important for mom and baby. Here in Kings County, we know that in 2020, 89% of mothers breastfed their baby after delivery. We also know that number drops quickly as mom and baby return home because barriers, then more barriers than ever are faced by women wanting to breastfeed past delivery. Access to fresh foods to ensure a strong milk supply, pressure to return to work earlier due to the current economy, and lack of access and time to pump when returning to, to work are some of the barriers women face. Most importantly, we know the benefits of breastfeeding, such as if you or your baby are sick, the number of antibodies and white blood cells in breastmilk increase to fight off the infection. We are so fortunate in Kings County to have a strong WIC program through public health, which supports 6,500 participants each year, which include pregnant, postpartum, and children up to five years, and our Kings County Breastfeeding Coalition made up of community members and professionals committed to supporting breastfeeding and women in our community. I'd like to invite Ann Margaret to say a few words.
Good morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, being part of Kings County Breastfeeding Coalition probably for the last 15 years. Um, it's been in practice now for about 25. Um, we do support, um, a lot of the moms in our community, um, but we also support other entities such as physicians' offices, the hospital, um, local clinics. And we, um, offer things like, um, our quarterly webinar, which we give CMEs and CEs to anybody who wants to join, but it can be anybody that wants to, um, join into those webinars just to make them aware of, uh, furthering their education and being able to support other, um, folks in the community for this entity. Um, we also have Facebook and Instagram so that we can send out CDPH. They get a lot of great information, especially right now with, uh, infant formula shortage. Um, we want to get information out there to make sure that moms aren't harming their Um, we want to get information out there to make sure that moms aren't harming their babies, um, and they know the proper information. So we definitely use a lot of that technique to be able to get that information out. Um, and, um, we do awareness once a month, once a year for August, and we do have a banner over Hanford Main Street. So we try to make sure we keep our contact with that. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
You, Ann Margaret. All right, we also have staff in the back from our WIC program, so if they could stand up so we could thank them for the work they do for breastfeeding women in Kings County. So the Kings County Department of Public Health WIC program and the Kings County Breastfeeding Coalition are asking the Board today to adopt a resolution proclaiming the month of August 2022 as National Breastfeeding Month in Kings County. Thank you.
Thank you Nicole. Questions, comments, or concerns?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, uh, moved by Fagundes, seconded by Peterson. Additional questions or comments? Here, seeing none, uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Let the record show, that item stands approved, five in favor. Thank you very much. The next item is to consider approval and agreement with Valley Voices. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Evinado Legaspi with Public Health. This morning, I bring forth an agreement with Valley Voices to provide COVID-19 education and prevention services to, to, due to the continued presence of the COVID-19 virus in Kings County. A sole source justification was submitted to and approved by the purchasing manager on July 6th, 2022, and we are requesting that the agreement be retroactively approved from July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. I'd like to address, number one, why it was determined that a sole source agreement was appropriate in this instance, and, number two, why the agreement is retroactive to July 1st. Uh, so why sole source? Uh, through the epidemiology and laboratory capacity, ELC funding, the California Department of Public Health required local health departments to partner with community-based organizations, or CBOs, to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 virus. The initial agreement with Valley Voices was procured in late July, early August of 2021, at a time when COVID-19 was spreading rapidly and hospitalizations were on the rise. So it was paramount that Kings County Department of Public Health partner with a trusted local CBO that has bilingual staff, experience with phone banking, and could immediately assist in contact, with contact tracing and other COVID-19 prevention services. Valley Voices had previously partnered with the Kings County, with Kings County to conduct the 2020 census outreach, and their work included canvassing and phone banking hard-to-count communities within Kings County. With limited time and resources, Valley Voices was able to meet or exceed expected outcomes. Valley Voices demonstrated that they are trusted messengers in the community and prior to contracting with the Health Department, they were already working in the community, helping monolingual, Spanish-speaking speakers register for COVID-19 vaccines and providing relevant information. On September 28th, 2021, your Board approved the First Amendment to the agreement, extending the term by nine months through June 30th, 2022, and increasing the maximum compensation by $326,876, for a total of $412,328, and expanding the services provided to support COVID-19 self-testing and additional outreach activities. As a result of this agreement, they have conducted over 4,000 case investigation interviews and have provided COVID-19 tests to approximately 700 residents with over 200 tests provided in May 2022 alone. They provide COVID-19 testing services every Monday at Alma's Flea Market, as well as other pop-up sites throughout Kings County, and they have distributed over 23,250 at-home antigen tests. Outreach services provided by Valley Voices include canvassing, social media engagement, phone banking, and tabling to provide Kings County residents COVID-19 education and resources. In addition, Valley Voices has hosted 33 COVID-19 vaccine events which resulted in more than 2,640 vaccines being administered. Valley Voices continues to demonstrate their willingness and competency to fulfill their contractual obligations, which has increased equitable access to health services for underserved communities, allowing public health staff to return to their normal responsibilities while maintaining the same level of access to COVID-19 testing, vaccines, and outreach activities. Valley Voices has developed the expertise and infrastructure necessary to provide these crucial COVID-19 mitigating services, and are a trusted messenger in the community with an extensive network of staff that continues to increase equitable access to resources and information, which is demonstrated by their ability to meet and exceed the expected outcomes of the agreement. So why retroactive to July 1st, 2022? Um, Valley Voices has established a presence in several communities throughout Kings County, and we did not want there to be a gap in services or pull department staff from their regular responsibilities to maintain, maintain that presence. We initially intended to amend the agreement which expired on June 30th, 2022, to extend it for an additional 12 months and expand the scope of work to include a provision for Valley Voices to implement a promotor or community health educator network in Kings County. Negotiations had to be pushed back since we were waiting to hear back from the California Department of Public Health if we would still be required to provide COVID-19 case investigation, and we were notified on mid-June, uh, June 16th actually, that the performance period for the ELC funding was extended through, uh, June of 2024, which delayed finalizing the budget. The new agreement includes, uh, it still includes COVID-19 testing, vaccine events, and other community outreach and education services, and it's shifting the primary, which is shifting the primary focus from case investigation to other services intended to prevent the spread of the virus. The agreement also includes establishing a promotor community health worker model network that will provide additional health education to the public. This innovative model for community engagement highlights the role of grassroots and community leaders in engaging families to improve their lives um, and by increasing awareness about factors that affect their health. The program will serve disparate populations and promote health equity in neighborhoods and communities. The promotor community health worker training started this past June and hasn't put on hold pending the execution of this agreement. Uh, the, for, as far as the fiscal impact, the cost for fiscal year 2022, 2023 is $635,069, and the expenditure appropriations and revenues are included in the Department of Public Health fiscal year 2022, 2023 adopted budget, which is budget unit 401200, account 92047. So we respect, respectfully request your Board to approve the agreement with Valley Voices for COVID-19 education and prevention services retroactively effective from July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023, 23, sorry, and authorize the Director of Public Health to amend the agreement for non-substanti- substantiative changes and non-financial contractual changes without requiring further Board approval. Um, this concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good, thank you. Questions, comments, or concerns?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Peterson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. With respect to this contract and, and, uh, you know, it's something that I worked on a lot when I was Chair. Um, now, I get that, you know, under COVID, we had some really challenging circumstances with, um, contracts, but, you know, for me, this is becoming a little too common, and that is contracting outside of, uh, approval. Um, I can look to County Council and ask questions of, you know, if you approve a contract prior to Board approval, it puts us in a very difficult position. How, how do you, uh, extricate yourself from a contract that you haven't seen? Uh, and then, you know, the costs of those contracts are astronomical and from, uh, from a level of, um, you know, legal binding, um, approvals. Can you define what, what is approved and what is not, uh, in our contractual policy?
If I understand your question correctly, that, um, a contract is not a contract until the Board of Supervisors approve it. If there's retroactive, um, then it's, it's only dates back to the date of retroactivity if the Board deems it approved. As far as the services rendered they're under, they're not rendered under a valid contract.
So, and that was what I faced as Chair throughout, throughout COVID. And, uh, you know, it's very concerning to me. It puts the county taxpayers, uh, you know, ultimately in, in a very difficult position because now we're spending tax dollars to fix something that should have never occurred, um, prior to a contract. So, you know, I, I, I understand, uh, you know, the, the COVID scenario and, and, you know, to some extent, uh, COVID operations have normalized. Um, Supervisor Valley, uh, brought up issues with sole source contracting, um, last week. Uh, it was for far less than this. This is three quarters of a million dollars. Where are we going to be at when we try to negotiate that in a court situation? What's that going to cost us? So, um, I guess what I'm asking for is some options here. I know that they've been here, but I think, um, you know, due jail, due jail, due diligence, um, and also a normalized, uh, scenario. And, and from a taxpayer standpoint, I'm sure that they would demand that, you know, we're going to spend taxpayer dollars wisely. And it should go through a normal process and it should be a competitive process to make sure that we're getting the bang for the taxpayers' dollars. So, I don't know, um, how to rectify this. Um, again, I, I worked with the previous CAO and the current CAO on this issue. Um, it doesn't sit well with me, and, uh, and I know that, uh, you know, I, we've delivered that message to, um, you know, the county staff, and, uh, so I guess I'm looking for options. Um, I don't want to, uh, evacuate services and not have services. And so, I don't know if we have some alternatives so that we can get normalized contracting back online in this county.
Mr. Chairman? Was that a question or just a statement?
I was asking.
Yeah.
As, as far as this current agreement, I think that there are options that are available are to disapprove, to approve, or to ask staff to bring it back amended. Um, perhaps if you want to continue with services so that there's no interruption, but you also want to ensure that the RFP process is, um, is complied with. You could approve a short-term agreement or ask the staff to bring back a short-term agreement with amended terms, um, so that services can continue until an RFP compete, can be completed. That, those would be the three options that immediately come to mind.
Thank you Diane. Supervisor Val.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that staff remind, uh, the Board that this, uh, agreement, it's only being retroactive because it was already on our consent calendar and it got pulled. And it got pulled about three weeks ago. Um, I believe when I asked why it got pulled was, it was simply because the contract needed to be, uh, drafted to include the new, um, fiscal years. That's what I was told and that's what I relayed back on here. So, did I get incorrect information on that?
Supervisor Valley to the Chair, the contract, there was two contracts pulled from that agenda. One for behavioral health, excuse me, and this contract amendment. Those were pulled because those contracts had expired and the department was trying to amend them, and you can't amend an expired contract. So they had to come back with a new contract, which they brought back today.
Okay, so then whose fault was it to bring an expired contract?
It's my understanding the delay was with Valley Voices, correct?
It was mutual with CDPH, Valley Voices, and then the processing to get on the agenda, we missed the June 30th timeline that we wanted to get it on the calendar, so it went after.
Well, I appreciate you saying that because I don't think it should be put all on the shoulders of Valley Voices who have been, um, bit, very busy and helpful as reported out through, um, uh, the gentleman at the podium. Uh, I get, I also agree, I, I hear Supervisor Peterson as well. I, I heard him last year as a Chair. I know that this is something that, um, has been on your radar, not specifically Valley Voices, but the process. And so, so I'm with him on that, but in this case, um, I wouldn't want the example to be, uh, made of Valley Voices, especially at a time where I'm not sure, uh, our COVID numbers, uh, have normalized. I guess we'll hear, uh, the newest update from our Public Health Director shortly. Um, that being said, that's, that's from, um, from everything that's been, uh, uh, put out so far and, and, and new, um, sub-variants and a lot of, um, uh, cases right now, at least, uh, in, in, uh, Southern California and Northern California, that, uh, n- now would not be the time to, to pause this. I believe the last, uh, report we heard was increases in, in testing again, and increases in people coming to get the vaccines and, um, and again, as I spoke of, uh, during the pandemic, uh, we got to look at the data too, and the data, I believe, continues to shows that, uh, Latinos have been, uh, impacted at a very high rate. Uh, as a Latino leader, I wouldn't want to be the one to pull the plug on an important and vital service like this, especially in our small rural communities. Supervisor Peterson's, uh, district is majority Latino as well. I would expect that we would show, uh, uh, some compassion, uh, and some leadership, um, uh, to a community that's relying on this service as well. So, um, with that, Mr. Chairman, uh, I, I want to be open to, uh, my colleagues', um, uh, uh, his concerns on this, and I would hope that we could work today, uh, Su Peterson, to get your concerns heard and moved on, but also keep this vital service going through the community.
Yep. Well, and, and as last week you stated, you, you believe there should be competitive, um, processes for, um, for our contracting, and, you know, with respect to your data question, I have no, I have no, um, i- i- I'm not speaking to the data of COVID itself. I'm, I'm speaking to the operations of the county. So, whatever they are, they are. But our operations in general, how we contract in this county is what I'm trying to get to, and, and, uh, I just think it puts us in a terrible situation. I'm looking for alternatives. Um, I've heard that we could extend a contract, uh, short-term, and then actually do an RFP, uh, to make sure that, that the taxpayers of Kings County are, are being treated fairly, and, and, uh, we don't know that until there's a competitive process. And, uh, short of that, um, again, I, I'm not questioning, um, where we are with COVID, uh, in our communities. I'm just saying that there is a, a contractual contract, uh, contractual policy that this county holds, and it's not being adhered to, and I think we need to get ourselves in a position where we are actually contracting before we're bound to do so. And short of that, um, we're just asking for problems and, and, uh, I can't support, I can't support this today. Um, I, I am willing to look at alternatives because I do believe that, um, our communities deserve, um, that support and, uh, and levels, and who knows what, what's going to occur, you know, over the next six months. Um, they could, you know, light off again and run, but this is not about community activism or organization. This is about normalized contractual operations with the people's money. That's where I'm at. So, I'm looking for alternatives. I'm willing to look at an extension to get us to a, a fair and balanced, uh, contractual process, but, um, I, I simply can't support this today.
Good, thank you. Supervisor Verboon?
I have a couple of questions. So, the $635,000 is used for their contract to provide what service? Do they give out shots? Are they tied into my turn? So, what, what's their, what's their job description? I mean, what do they physically do?
They, they are tied into my turn. They can register, um, people to get vaccines. They, um, have nurses that.
Yeah, they, how, I mean, so I've, I've had, I've had all four shots, and I've never had any assistance going on on my turn, so they help someone go to the computer to fill out the application?
Yes.
For $635,000?
Well, that, and.
They don't give shots?
The, the nurses actually provide the shots. They organize the events and provide.
Oh, they, they have nurses too?
They, the contract nurses are through.
So, we currently have a, a contract, a small contract with ALLETE. So Valley Voices does the coordination of the events, the setup of the events, the advertising, the signing up individuals for a vaccination event. The nurses come in, but Valley Voices handles all the event, as well as the registration and the input of the data after like a vaccination event. In addition, they're doing canvassing to get people out to get their vaccines. In addition, there's another component of this which is a community health worker model, which is to, it's kind of the expansion of COVID to do, provide education in communities, um, that are not being reached to kind of provide education about disease prevention and, in addition. So some of that funding is also for that project as well, but they are hosting clinics.
Okay, I know we, we, we went to Alma's Flea Market first with our staff, uh,
Right.
two and a half years ago. So it's kind of the same thing, but we weren't allowed to be in the facility. Are they allowed to be in the facility at Alma's Flea Market, or they got to be in a parking lot?
No, they're allowed to have a table there and they're tabling there and at all the farmers markets and different events around the county.
Okay, alright.
Is that funding?
I just, I went through the process like everybody else and I didn't, I didn't have to go through Valley Voices.
Right, and a lot of people come to the Health Department or go to their provider or pharmacy, or don't go through my turn, you just get your vaccine. But there are populations in our community that maybe don't know the language or don't know the process or are not trusting of the process of going into the computer and entering, so they, they trust a valued messenger that Valley Voices has been providing to guide them how to get a vaccine.
And is this the same Valley Voices that attacked us on the redistricting?
Whether it is or it's not, that shouldn't make a difference in this decision right here because that would be.
Money that toughens me down. I mean, I just, I want to get a full understanding of it. I, I haven't used Valley Voices through my, my COVID process. And I, I don't understand, so I just want to make sure I understand it before I give someone $635,000. I want to understand the process. If they, if they provide, uh, nurses. So they're just basically someone that goes out and gets, infiltrates this, this part of society that we can't get to from this venue here?
They're an extension of like the Health Department doing the work to reach out to communities to get them vaccinated and educated. And they were doing some contact tracing and disease investigation.
Okay, so they contract trace too as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good deal. No further questions?
Thank you. Supervisor Valley, any questions, comments?
Uh, yes.
Don't just roll your eyes when I just ask the question. I need to understand.
I didn't, I didn't roll my eyes. I, I was, nobody answered your question, so I answered it.
I have no idea. Only time I was out there was Ed was out there doing the first testing deal.
Yeah.
And I was unaware that they were out there doing that booth, so.
Um, Mr. Chairman, uh, so my question is, going back to the, uh, original contract, was, uh, was there an RFP at that time? And if so, were, were there multiple organizations interested?
No, at, at the time of the original contract, which was in July of, uh, 2021, um, they were identified as a sole source, since, um, there aren't too many other CBOs in the area with that type of experience. They had, uh, worked for the county in canvassing and phone banking for the 2020 census. Uh, so they were recommended, uh, to the department.
Yeah, and, and, I know. Yeah, and, and I know it's, I know it's been a while since we had a serious COVID talk, but throughout the pandemic, there were a lot of challenges that were raised, were discovered specifically amongst farmworker population, Latino population, the rural communities in Kings County. And, you know, there was issues, a lot of issues associated with those challenges. And, you know, I'd hate for the board to take a couple of steps back here today. That, that should not be the case. As far as my comments on a sole source, I don't, I mean, you're talking apples and oranges. My, my comments on a sole source were in regards to a doctor that the county continues, continues to give $100,000 a year to.
It's a contract.
Somebody who doesn't show up, who doesn't come and give any data, who was absent during the pandemic. And when this contract came up again two weeks ago, I, I asked, there's multiple doctors in Kings County who are interested in this man's position. Did we notify those doctors in the community? And the answer was no. And I had an issue with that. I voted no with that. This case right here is more of a, I look at it as more as a renewal. This is an organization that has proven their worth, has been out there, multiple events as stated in the community, continues to help alleviate the challenges. You know, last week we did a beautiful thing. We invested $6 million to help small businesses in Kings County because the pandemic is still here and is still causing negative impacts to the community and small businesses in Kings County. Therefore, the pandemic is still here and it's still causing negative impacts to certain populations of the community that I would hope that today, I'm not the only one that would stand up for them. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I would, again, I'm agreement with Sue Peterson to, for staff to please take a look at the future for, for how these contracts are coming. But today, this contract should have already been voted on. It's not fair to Valley Voices to be looked at in negative light when staff has said earlier that they missed a deadline to get this on agenda. And at one point it was on and then it got pulled. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would ask respectfully that the board please consider a yes vote today and we move forward and we keep these critical services for, for people who need it in the county of Kings. Be my motion to move forward, Mr. Chairman.
I, I would respectfully ask to amend his motion to maybe consider a six-month extension on the contract and bring it back to a sole source. What do you call it, fly a RFP?
Okay, yes, sir. I'll, I'm, I'm on to fly that. There's nothing wrong with something going out to bid. It's public money, as you stated. That's a very fair, that's very fair.
So if I understand the motion is then to, a motion to direct staff to renegotiate the terms of this agreement so that it's for a six-month term rather than a 12-month term and then to go out to RFP for these services?
Yes, I sense that's what we need to be able to keep the services moving today. And I'd, I'd like to work fairly with the board to get there today.
Before you open it up, Ed, the question I had, Rosemary, is the, and we're, we're getting close to the endemic part of the pandemic. And in the termination clauses, we don't have a termination clause for the end of the pandemic. And we're talking six months, maybe the language, again, is an off, you know, offer of suggestion is that there's a period of time after the pandemic has been arrested or, or the endemic part has come up because this is a 12-month contract. And yet, you know, and it depends on who you talk to at the state, you know, it could be up in, it's going to be at least September, it's probably October, it might be calendar year, you know? And so with that moving target, but I wonder if Diane or through county council, we could negotiate some kind of language that talks about the endemic and the setting aside of the public health emergency.
So the funding itself, you know, obviously goes to 2024. I, I really hear the competitive bid process and during COVID, a lot happened quickly to do these sole sources. So I feel like, I mean, we could do the six-month amendment and then take it to RFP or do a year with the thought that if anything else beyond that, we have to RFP it. We're trying to get back in our normal processes. I think it's very in line with what we should be doing with all of our agreements. It's just time and.
Process. And again, my, my comments today aren't pointed directly at you, but just an awareness sitting in our chair, watching contracts continually come that are backdated. It's a problem. It's a problem. It's an exposure to this county that's unacceptable and, and at least to me. And no matter what your issue you're working on, this is, this is about contracts and making sure that, that we're not throwing money away because, you know, contracts go bad, right? Performance is an issue. And I'm not saying this is, there's performance issues here, but short of a contract, you're exposed. And no matter what their performance is, so.
So I will say that we have, I believe we have a motion and a second on that motion.
Discussion and Mr. Hill would like the floor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to add clarifying language, if I may, to that motion because regardless of the six-month or the term of this contract, it would be coming back retroactively. I just wanted to point that out and make that clarity so that it's not misunderstood.
Appreciate that input. Thank you very much. Now Diane, you want to wrap it up?
Yes, we just, we have the, the motion, we have the second for the motion. I know that there has been discussion about different concepts, but the motion has not been amended. And so I believe that if there's not further discussion, I just want to make clear where we are and I believe we're having that discussion, but that we move forward and don't let the motion die for lack of vote.
And Supervisor Valley, did you, did you accept the six-month language?
Yes, we can get there today.
So I think that part has been discussed with a, and was it a six-month review or six-month?
Six months and then an RFP.
And then an RFP. Okay, very good for clarification.
So Rosemary, are you happy with the performance with Valley Voices?
So far, they have been very good at performing. They've reported, they've been doing everything that we have asked them to do. They've been great partners. We've not been unhappy with their performance.
And they're here today?
They're on.
Would they like to say anything on our behalf?
Hello, this is Claire Fidiassi with Valley Voices. And we are grateful partners with the Public Health Department to be able to reach generally a Spanish-speaking part of our community that, as was mentioned, might be hesitant to access health services through the Public Health Department. We are, most of our team is bilingual and we try to bridge the gap for folks who might have technology issues as far as registering for a vaccine online or communication issues. So our staff has been continuing without a contract for the month of July. We are every Monday at the swap meet, every Wednesday at the Episcopal Church of the Savior, and every Saturday at El Rey Supermercado, offering testing and setting up appointments. We're, we're doing vaccinations on Mondays and then the Wednesdays and Saturdays, we are offering testing, onsite PCR testing that is processed through the county health department and offering antigen tests for folks to take home that are the 15-minute response tests. So we have not stopped doing the work, supporting the county health department, and we hope to continue doing so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that clarification. I feel better.
Uh, would you like to close? Either one of you, Rose or?
Funding is specific to COVID. It does mention other communicable diseases, which is part of why we're including the health worker Pomotores program, just so that we continue that. So there's funding specifically tied to COVID. Also, there's provisions in there that dictate that a certain amount of the funding be allocated to CBOs. We have, from other fundings gone up, gone out to RFP and we were working with a firm that was out of Virginia, which was the only one that submitted a proposal for a different type of funding. It's part of the, the impetus to continue with Valley Voices being that they are local. They know the community, they've been working with the community for over a year now.
Good, thank you. The motion was made by Valley, seconded by Peterson with a, an amendment, and the amendment was approved by the maker of the motion. Are there additional discussion on the motion? And I see no one come forward, so will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes. But the record showed the item stands approved, five in favor. Thank you very much. Good luck. Rosemary, would you like to continue with an update on the local emergency in Kings County?
Maybe this should have gone before. Morning supervisors, Rosemary Rand, Department of Public Health. I'm here to provide a COVID update. The case number totals of COVID cases for the last two weeks has been 1,244 cases of COVID. The previous two-week period was 1,104. The COVID case numbers remain elevated for the last two weeks. Seventy percent of the samples sequenced in Kings County in the month of July have been BA5 Omicron subvariant, which is consistent with sequencing across other parts of California in the U.S. The BA4 and BA5 subvariants are contributing to reinfection even among people with earlier Omicron subvariants. It's much more contagious, less illness. Kings County remains in the high classification for community transmission, transmission this week for the CDC and most of the state of California is in the high transmission area as well as all of the San Joaquin Valley. Current hospitalizations are at 15. 14 are Kings County residents, none in the ICU, eight in med-surg, two in OB and four in ER waiting for med-surg beds, although we have not received notification of them needing additional help. Testing continues, as you heard, in the county at various locations and also at public health. In the last two weeks, there were a total of 1,528 tests done in Kings County Department of Public Health and 5,730 total in the county with a 23.9% positivity. We continue to hand out rapid antigen test kits to residents, businesses and local agencies, and the public can also obtain them from pharmacies. Over the last two weeks, 1,246 vaccines were given in Kings County. As far as the Kings County Department of Public Health, only 217 vaccines were given. Residents can get vaccinations at health departments, local pharmacies and several of the pop-up clinics around the county. Kings County weekly COVID numbers and additional data is located on our website at kcdph.com. As always, would like to remind everyone to stay home when you're sick, get tested if experiencing COVID-like symptoms and get vaccinated or boosted if you do not. Masks continue to provide protection and we strongly recommend wearing them. Masks are still required in healthcare settings. I am going to give a quick update on monkeypox as of July 21st. There are 434 probable confirmed cases in California. There are no cases in Kings County thus far, but it has been, monkeypox has been detected in the valley, four cases in Kern, one case in Fresno and one case in Tulare. Most of the cases are very isolated to certain populations, but like I said, it's, it's fairly low risk, but it's in the news right now. I'm available for any questions.
Good, thank you. Any questions on COVID or monkeypox?
West Nile?
West Nile, yeah.
Yes, so thank you for bringing that up. So we did have our first West Nile virus case in Kings County. And there are West Nile virus mosquitoes in Kings County detected as well as St. Louis encephalitis was detected in Kings County. So we have the ominous of being the first to have both a West Nile virus case and a St. Louis encephalitis mosquito identified this year. And then there's a couple of other cases around the state. So where mosquito repellent, dusk, they're out. Mosquitoes, so wear long sleeves and even early morning as well.
I'm good, I'm sour, they don't bother me.
They bother me.
My girls are saying, I get bit up here. I'm like, ain't no one bothering me, I'm good.
That's good.
Let's get all the garlic.
Maybe.
Keeps vampires away too. So you're, you're covered both directions. Many other questions or comments? Any questions from the audience regarding health? See, no one, thank you very much. Appreciate the update and keep up the good work and stay healthy. The heat emergency, we were what, 14 days into, 14 or 15 days into triple digit and there's no let up? Exactly. So yeah, it's the valley, it's hot. Yeah, drink plenty of water. With that, thank you very much. We'll now move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the board member announcements and reports on their own initiative. Board members may make brief announcements and reports on their own activities. Supervisor Fagundes?
Lot of phone calls last couple of weeks. Last week I was at the meeting, as everybody knows, and I wound up with this sciatic problem and I, a lot, a lot of work from home, but I didn't come into the office last week. I'm still trying to get better.
Take it easy and those salsa classes do not help you. So yeah, be careful dancing. Yeah, yeah, those, those extra moves, you know, are kind of tough on the body.
I've been at the clinic over here and they've been real helpful.
Have they?
Yes. They, they really work with you and try to help you in every, which way that they can and appreciate that.
Yeah, good, good. That's good to hear. Supervisor Valley?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I did get a text just now from Corcoran PD, did a blast text to Corcoran residents announcing a COVID vaccine clinic July 28th at John Maruk Park from 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And that's with the city of Corcoran, Kings County Public Health and Valley Voices. So I want to put that out as well. Other than that, it was a slow week last week, celebrated my birthday and took some time off, went to the coast and back at it today. So thank you.
Very good, thank you. Supervisor Verboon?
Thank you. Last week, we had a special meeting with the Greater Kings County Chamber and we picked the Agriculture's of the Year and Ag Support of the Year. Ag Support of the Year is Guard Tullian and also, and the Ag Agriculture of the Year is Tony Azvedo. That event will be, I believe, October 14th at West Hills Arena.
Oh.
Hopefully be well attended. We're looking between 200 and 500 people. I think Guard Tullian brings a large crowd. Also attended the cattleman dinner at San Luis County with Debbie Arnold, San Luis Port of Superlighters. And they picked their Agriculture's of the Year at that event. And with, they picked the tactassessor and they talked about all the great things he'd done to protect agriculture in their community. I thought that was a good deal. Friday, I attended San Joaquin Valley GPA, which is the San Joaquin's Amtrak Board of Directors, talked about getting our seventh data trip back up and running and business, general business side stuff going on. That's all I have, thank you.
How good would that be, Sue, if you get the seventh trip?
Oh, let's go back to this schedule before COVID.
5:30 in the morning or something?
No, it's the same, same as before. It, it, we've always had seven. We tried to go eight, didn't work out. And then now we're down to six because of COVID. We're just trying to get back to normal. So back as it was back in March of 2020.
And what's the ridership? Do they give you any ridership numbers or have they returned? No?
They're down a little bit.
Are they still down?
They're coming up.
All right, good, thank you. Supervisor Peterson?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. After the meeting last week, I headed to Denver, Colorado for the National Association of Counties' annual meeting. And that's their policy development meeting where policies from every aspect of counties make their way to the full board. And, and so with that, also on my, my, my exodus tour of, of my service, I serve as, for the last two years, I've served as Chair of the Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee, which, you know, very proudly represents agricultural and rural communities across this nation. And, and once again, had a, had a great meeting and were able to pass policies with respect to WOTUS that were adopted by the full board, trying to encourage that definition and, and not to further expand the boundaries of, of WOTUS. As well, there was an election held for the officers. James Gore was elected second Vice President of the National Association of Counties. And will serve for the next four years going through the chairs. And so great to have a Californian there and, and a really great leader. You know, he comes from a fairly large area, but he gets, you know, the rural areas of, of this state. And now I know he'll be very helpful for those communities across the nation. Just a little touch on economic influencers. Report this morning, returns from Walmart are way down. They sounded the alarm today with respect to the economy, the Biden economy and, and where it's headed. Not good. They are lowering prices, try to move goods when in this economy is concerning, you know, the costs of goods have went up, but they, they. the cost of goods have went up, but they equated to increase in food and gas. People are not buying high-end products. So just say that as a warning and how we look at ourselves financially going into the future. And with that, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Very good, thank you. For me, we had a meeting of the Kiwanis Club of Lemoore. Service clubs continue to struggle under the health emergency, but we continue to meet and we are discussing different items. I participated in the blood draw for the wellness program here at Kings County. If you've not done that, I would encourage you to make that appointment and get that blood drawn, and they'll also do a health assessment based on that. I do, Mr. Hill, want to make sure that the Act Commissioner gets over there to certify the scales, because the last time I did that, they weigh heavy. And so we probably need to recertify those scales and see if we can't get them. I think we might have somebody in the back that, do you used to work at that, in that department that might be able to help out if he has the skill set? Yeah, yeah. Thanks, Buzz, thank you for being here.
Been all downhill since he left, right?
Yeah, so, or if you have a little bit of extra helium, I probably need to take a little helium and see if I can get that weight off the.
A little.
But, yeah, we'll see if we can't get those scales certified. On Thursday, we had Calviva Finance meeting to reflect some changes. We also struggle with the state policies, and so we had already had, we're 21 days into a new budget, and we've already had to make revisions based on state changes in their policy, and so we're continually changing that in order to comply. We also reviewed the investment policy of Calviva and we continue to move forward. We also talked about our fiscal goals and reviewed some of the key health indicators of the three-county region. There are currently 405,014 souls enrolled in the program in the three-county region. There are over 12 million Californians receiving care by way of Medi-Cal managed care contractors, and the state has seen fit to give Kaiser, again, kind of a sole source, to be able to re-enter the Medi-Cal managed care market beginning in January 2024. So we'll continue to watch that as it unfolds. As if I didn't have enough fear of needles, then I went ahead and participated in the Pint for Pint program at the Central California Blood Center on Friday. And so I encourage you, if you are a blood donor and your ability to do that, you do get a pint of Baskin Robbins ice cream and some coupons for some other drinks if you need that incentive. And kicked off this weekend and will go, I think, pretty much the whole month of August. Continue to announce at the Little League Tournament in Lemoore, the 11-and-under tournament, teams from Reading to Porterville, announcing in both fields, makes it a little ni, kind of nice to get back where I started 28 years ago or so, announcing Little League. But the hot weather sure has a lot of people, wah, 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 you know, and so between the players, the coaches, the officials, everybody's involved, nobody's happy, and they're not afraid to share it with you. So, yeah, it's, I messed up a couple of names, so I just changed their names, you know, you've only been alive 11 years and you, your parents have been calling you by the wrong name the whole time, I'm telling you. So we continue to do that. And with that, Mr. Hill, do you have a report on board correspondence, upcoming events, and future agenda items?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For board correspondence, your board received correspondence dated July 14th, 2022, from the Kings River Hardware School District regarding the general obligation bond election for November 8th, 2022. Your board also received the 2122 final report from the Kings County Grand Jury, and your board received the 2223 Lemoore Cemetery District budget, excuse me. For upcoming events, the Kings County Library will be hosting its last session of the Learn to Build a Model for Teens and Adults at its Hanford Branch Library located at 401 North Doughty Street, Hanford, on July 27th from 4:00 to 5:00 PM. For more information on the event, you can call 852-4004. The city of Hanford is hosting Movies in the Park on July 29th. Admission is free. Disney's The Jungle Cruise will be shown and the movie begins at dusk in Civic Park. Kings County Arts Center will be hosting an evening of arts on Friday, August 5th, from 6:30 to 8:00 PM at 605 North Doughty Street, Hanford. There will be an exhibition of art, carnival games, face painting, popcorn, punch, and superior dairy ice cream. Admission is free. There will be a public safety appreciation luncheon hosted by the Greater Kings County Chamber of Commerce and Hanford Chamber of Commerce on August 10th at the Hanford Civic Auditorium located at 400 North Doughty Street, Hanford. The event will take place at 12:00 PM and tickets are $20 each. Tickets can be purchased on Eventbrite or through the website of hanfordchamber.com. The National Guard Bureau and Department of Air Force invite the public to learn about a propose, excuse me, a proposal to locate F-35A aircrafts at Lemoore Naval Air Station. An informational meeting will be held to learn more about this proposal, ask questions, and to submit comments. It will be held Wednesday, August 10th from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM at LTA Portuguese Hall located at 470 Champion Street in Lemoore. There will also be a virtual meeting Thursday, August 25th from 5:30 to 6:30 PM. The city of Avonale and Self-Help Enterprise will be hosting a rental and utilities workshop for those impacted by COVID-19 on August 17th from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the Avonale Recreation Center located at 717 East Monterey Street in Avonale. For more information, please call 802-1600. The Hanford Chamber of Commerce will be hosting a Biz Ball Pickleball Tournament on Saturday, August 27th at 7:00 PM at the Hanford Pickleball Course located at 1010 West Grangeville Boulevard. The registration is $60 per team. For upcoming agenda items, on August 2nd, administration has one item for consideration regarding the announcement of a Budget Book photo contest winners. Ag has one item for consideration, an agreement with the California Department of Food and Agriculture for European Grapevine Moth Detection Program. Bay Area Health has one item for consideration, approval participation agreement with California Mental Health Services Authority for the semi-statewide enterprise health record program. Fire has one item for consideration to approve a grant application for new low-emission emergency vehicles. HSA has two items, consideration to authorize the Director of Human Services Agency to act as a signee for Project Home Key documents, and consideration to approve agreement with Fiscal Experts Incorporated doing business as Time Study Buddy for program-level time-tracking software solution. Public Health has one item for consideration to adopt a resolution proclaiming the month of August is Valley Fever Awareness Month in Kings County. And Sheriff has one item for consideration regarding the approval and agreement with Hanford Adult School for Inmate Education Services. That concludes our report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hill, Mr.?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Just a quick note, I know Scott House still on the line. I did get wind of an effort to paint counties across this nation green with lighting coming up. There's an effort to increase awareness about Veterans Affairs issues and funding, especially with respect to mental health issues. And I know, Scott, if you're still listening, maybe you could address that, because I don't have the dates in front of me, but I think it'd be a great, a great effort for us to take on behalf of that, that effort.
Supervisor Peterson through the chair, I am here, and I actually am unaware of this effort that you're talking about. I can reach out and see what I can find out about it, but I've not been contacted and had not heard anything about it. So I can find out and then I can provide something, you know, either through an agenda item or through public comment, but we'll certainly get back to you before that.
Yep, thank you.
I think the cannabis ranch already beat you to it. I think they already have green light tonight, but I'm sure it has for different reason that the.
That's just the green smokey glow.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Thank you, Mr. Hill, appreciate that. I want to thank the Kings County Grand Jury that is here, and they are recruiting for members. So if you know anybody that has some extra time and wants another 12 cents in their pocket, they can certainly volunteer for that duty. The applications are on the website, and if you do know somebody, it might be a nice gesture to go ahead and invite them to apply, because it is probably a good extracurricular activity that does, might be able to buy you half of a Starbucks or something, but, you know, the guys that own Starbucks really should get a break, but I'm not sure if that can ever happen, but we are, we do need to work on that a little bit.
Talking discounts to grand jury members?
And what about these other private guys that do all this coffee stuff and all these very nice drinks that are available at a much more reasonable price? You know, so, yeah, just kind of bear that in mind, that because your grand jury dollars go a lot farther at other coffee shops.
Going to grease the palms?
Yeah, yeah, and, and you can get your shirts done at the same time. So, you know, there, it's a dual purpose.
Poor guy's got to pay for water, sprinklers.
Everything.
Pavement.
Darn.
Air conditioning.
With that, thank you very much, everyone. It's been an enjoyable meeting. The last item on the agenda is closed session, where we have one item, significant exposure to litigation. And Diane, is there anything else we need to report to the public on that closed session item?
I have nothing.
Very good. With that, the board will move into closed session to take up that item and then adjourn out of closed session to our next regular scheduled meeting on Tuesday, August 2nd at 9:00 AM. Please stay cool out there, it is hot, drink plenty of water, don't mix it with anything, straight water, and we'll see you on August 2nd. Thank you very much, everyone. Meeting will move into closed session.
Who's the unibomber?